Know what he's doing to stop this.
To stop this kind of stuff.
And it's not only here, it's in other cities too, because I got it on record. And I've done the recording and nobody want to address it.
Yes, sir. You're right. But like I said, I've had enough. I didn't stand tonight for the pledge and I won't be standing anymore. Because if people can't be allowed to be treated the way I was treated at that retreat Saturday, when the mayor and staff personally attacked me, not physically, but they attacked me. That's why we didn't get a chance to talk about the agenda items. Because they made the whole session on the mayor and the council about me personally. About why I invited the media. About I was called again a liar, like I was called in this, in this chambers. I was called that again Saturday.
Excuse me, you called the media? Somebody say you called the media?
Well, I made it known to, to you that we were having a retreat.
So you called the media?
No. Yes, uh, your se- your, your session, I've made you aware that we was having our retreat.
So you notified me?
I notified you.
And I'm part of the media?
Yes, sir.
But why should the media have to be notified? Other than, other than, other than.
They're supposed to be notified by the city manager.
And they're supposed to show up, right?
Yes, sir.
So you didn't, you, you, so you invited the media, but somebody should have already invited the media, they just didn't show up?
Right.
Why didn't they show up, you think?
Because they were asked not to show up. So that I could be attacked like I was. And it not be, and it not be recorded. But glory to God that you was there. Because I don't even trust, I'm gonna say this and I'll be done. I don't trust being in any settings with these people anymore. After Saturday, I, I don't trust it and I fear for my safety. I really do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Welcome to the city of Douglas, uh, mayor and commission. This will serve as our work session on this dynamic February tenth, twenty twenty. As always, we'll turn it over to the pride of Wes Green, Mr. Charlie Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Campbell. First item is, uh, item one, page four, review of the January twenty eighth, uh, twenty twenty minutes.
And there I spoke with the city clerk, and there's been some changes to be made, um, that were to mind. And it's nothing, nothing as far as commenting it, um, but, um, I would like to make motion that they go on the consent agenda.
Mr. Moore?
Fine with me.
Mr. Taylor?
Hmm.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
And Mr. Gow?
Consent.
Next item, item two, found on page twelve, discuss the purchase of FY twenty baseball, softball, and swim equipment, standing by, mayor, purchase agent.
Good evening. Uh, it's, uh, notice says this is our annual baseball softball, phone kit, equipment. And, uh, we, it, it's, uh, sent twenty three vendors down the pond that were accepted on their own land for a grand total of twenty five thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars, nine, eight cents. Before that.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Consent. Mr. Gow?
Consent.
And Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
And Mr. Moore?
Consent.
Next item, item three, found on page fifteen, discuss the FY twenty sale of the two thousand and five Spartan Crimson Gladiator Quinn. Standing by, mayor, purchase agent.
We was gonna leave that name out there. But anyway, when we bought, uh, other ladder truck or purchase it, and, uh, the company was gonna give us hundred and twenty thousand, I thank for it, allow us to use the ladder truck to the, until our new one got here. And Mayor and Council, uh, pleasure, they asked me to fit it out, or y'all asked me to fit it out. And we did, uh, gain, uh, eleven thousand more dollars. It's that, sexy, coming, believe they're not the buyers from Missouri. It's, uh, John, Mid-South, Fire, uh, Apparatus, located, Rockville, Missouri, for a grand total of hundred and thirty one thousand dollars.
Consent agenda, Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Durham, consent.
Mr. Davis?
All right, next item, item four, uh, page, uh, eighteen, discuss the recognition of the oldest active wellness program participant, Stevie Young.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I guess this agenda will be a ten year regular work session, uh, Mr. Richard McFarlane, he's ninety six now, will be ninety seven, uh, later on this year. I will give you a brief history, he's come, he, he served in the battle, in the Korean War and the Battle of Normandy. So that's just history by itself, so he will be here and his, his.
Okay, good deal. So we just carried out four things already on the.
It's not on the record. No, so that's what exactly put on here, we had to take it forward because of the approval on the work session.
This might, once we get over there after the approval of the agenda, since he's ninety six, we might wanna get him on out of there.
Understand, sir. Next item, item five, found on page nineteen, discuss the Bethune Thai Incorporated Alcoholic Beverage License application, Roger Goddard.
Good evening. Uh, down at Thai, Thai Smiles Restaurant, which is located in the shopping center where State Law is. Uh, the owner of the restaurant, the name is Patrick Gecorn. He has applied for an alcoholic beverage license for his restaurant for a beer and wine. And here to bring it forward, the mayor's recommendation. He doesn't meet the qualifications to be the manager in licensee. And, uh, chief business review application also, he's no problem.
Mr. Moore?
Consent.
Mr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Mr. Gow?
Consent.
Thank you, item six, found on page twenty three, discuss the three one sevens alcoholic beverage license application, Roger Goddard.
This is also another restaurant that's, uh, gonna be owned and operated by Trey Day. And he is requesting a, uh, beer and wine alcoholic beverage license. He does meet the qualifications, Chief Edson has reviewed application, he's no problem.
Mr. Gow?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
And Mr. Lee?
Consent.
Mr. Moore? Next item?
Next, item seven, found on page twenty seven, uh, discuss amending the pond broker ordinance, and that'd be Roger Goddard.
While we were going through the qualification process of the, uh, city ordinance, we're going some updating house planning. Uh, Chief Edson's come up with the pond broker's, uh, ordinance. Uh, we have not updated our pond broker ordinance since nineteen seventy eight. And this is a new order to bring it up to State Law and make sure they're doing business on issue. It'll be for the first reading tonight.
For the first reading, Mr. Gow, you okay with carrying that four?
Aye.
Mr. Durham, you okay with carrying four? Carrying four?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Taylor?
Is it kind of careful? Yeah, careful.
Mr. Moore, you okay with carrying that four?
Thank you.
Mr. Durham, you okay with carrying that four?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Pearson, I have the number seven.
And what is it, concern?
This is, uh, discuss amending the pond broker ordinance. Uh, we gotta carry that four, uh, so far, everybody's gotta carry it four for the first reading.
For the first reading, okay. So Roger, I didn't tell you about how.
This is my way, Chief Edson, since he's doing the trade in some of the.
Oh, I didn't discuss this with you because we didn't expect him to have to do it. Okay. All right, that's fine.
So, Mr. City Manager, uh, since Commissioner Pearson just arrived, would you run back through what we have so far? And then we'll pick up with item eight.
Okay, so far on the consent agenda, we have item number one, approval of the January twenty eighth minutes. Uh, item two, approval of the purchase of the annual FY twenty baseball, softball, and swing equipment. Item three, approval of the FY twenty sale of the two thousand and five ladder truck. Uh, item five, um, approval of Bethune Thai Incorporated Alcoholic Beverage License. And the last item so far on the consent agenda is approval of three one sevens, uh, alcoholic beverage license. And the item four will be a take forward, which is recog- recognition of the oldest active wellness program. And then now we're at item seven, taking forward the first reading of the amending of pond broker ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Any concerns about what's been discussed?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item?
The next item, uh, item eight, found on page forty one. This will be discussed, approval of WMA Engineering, um, the company that's been working on our downtown Parky Park. They're ready to get to the next level of engineering phases, and George is here to discuss that, Architectural Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, as City Manager said, back on, uh, December twenty third, two thousand and nineteen, uh, we presented a conceptual plan to you all on what's the Parky Park downtown would look like. And during that meeting, we also get to come before you to ask for the approval to go to the next phase, which is to get the architectural rendering, uh, that will come along with the cost estimates. Um, to do that service, it's gonna be around fifteen thousand dollars. The EDA, you see their support letter, within the agenda item, they recommend this firm and that we move forward with that phase. Once we get the fees, um, well, the, the, the architectural, um, plans, we will come back to you all, um, with those dollar amounts. Once we identify funds, then we will bid it out for construction.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes, uh, Ms. Henderson and I had a chance to talk about, uh, certain items at the retreat, so yes, I'm fine with that.
We're approving fifteen, huh?
Oh, and the funds are proposed to come out of squash seats, I'm sorry.
Right. You approved the WA as the Architectural Services for that.
Then fifteen, right.
Well, it, it is whatever it's gonna be, we're, we're, we're thinking it's gonna be around fifteen thousand, but it may be thirteen, maybe sixteen, we don't know.
It won't exceed fifteen.
Right. That's what's.
You're, you're okay with that consent, Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Consent.
Uh, matter, matter for tip?
So it can exceed fifteen thousand?
No, this, you're right, sir.
Okay. Agenda has. I read it, that's why I wanted to clear up the state. Okay. What if you do it and come back?
Have to come back, yeah.
Okay.
Consent.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Gow? I'd like to hear a little bit more about what they would do for that money.
Basically, they're gonna do all the schematics that come with it, utilities, what they gave you was just a, basically a picture of what it would look like. Now they're gonna, um, as an architect, build in all the dynamics of what it would take to.
Okay. But, but, when they get it done, would you feel if all that plan actually do right?
That's what he, right.
Okay.
That's the service we would bid out.
Right. And they, based on what y'all have looked at, they're comparable with any other, these groups that we've worked with in the past?
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item will be item nine, found on page forty four, approval of the updated language access plan for the Henderson.
It is standard with, uh, many of the grants, state, federal funds that we receive, that we update many documents. One is this language access plan. What is basically saying is that, uh, we're gonna adhere to the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. We have a certain percent of Spanish population in the community, so anytime with our grants and programs that we receive, these state, federal funds, we have to advertise public hearings, um, of sorts like that in Spanish as well as in English. And so this is updated at this time.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes, we're just following protocol, it's what we should do, so it's, uh, on a real plan.
Consent.
Consent.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Lee?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
And Mr. Gow?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Next is item ten, uh, found on page sixty, uh, EDA appointment, uh, we have Mrs. Ladel Brinkway's appointment, um, has expired. We've been running it, she has reapplied, we have a request from the EDA to also reconsider her. And so we're gonna add that at Mayor Camp's appointment, this is Ladel Brinkway for another four-year term.
I would put that on a consent, since that's under me, uh, Ms. Brinkway has been very valuable on there. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Mr. Gow?
Consent.
Mayor Campbell? Uh, Mr. Moore?
Consent.
And this, uh, Pearson?
Uh, I'm fine with it, uh, were there any others who expressed an interest?
No.
No others, okay, yeah.
Okay, next item is item eleven, found on page sixty four, uh, title, discuss Mr. Roscoe Allen's appearance before the city of Douglas, city council agenda within the past sixteen months, Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
The, uh, thing is, we've already discussed this, uh, timing, timing of the agreement. And I do believe that it's within proper protocol for Commissioner Pearson to put items on our agenda. Uh, however, the, uh, the discussion of this and the, uh, the next item, the next item was also supposed to be discussed at our retreat. And I just don't think that we need to discuss these.
What are we discussing on Mr. Allen? Allen, Allen, what are we discussing?
Uh, those sixteen months of Mr. Allen, he's already discussed it, so my thing is.
No, no, you don't know what I'm proposing or asking, so you can't say we've already discussed it. Because I've never put anything on the agenda about Mr. Allen before.
Well, I think that this council has had enough, uh, information about Mr. Allen over sixteen months. Uh, I'm just not in, I just, me personally, I'm not in favor of discussing this item and the next item.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Moore, how do you feel about that?
I agree with you.
I put the, I, I'm on the agenda, I'm on the agenda, let me speak, let me say myself.
How do you feel about that? Mr. Taylor, how do you feel?
All right, I'm, you know, I done heard enough about Mr. Allen.
How do you feel about that?
I've heard enough, all right.
What have you all heard? Because it's my agenda item, it's my agenda item, no, sir, no, sir.
There's not enough.
No, sir.
We have everybody on the, on the.
It's my agenda item. It's my agenda item, Mr. Mayor, and you will allow me to speak about it.
Do you have any other?
What I need to know, Ms. Winetta, I need to know how many minutes was Mr. Allen allowed to speak at each meeting? That's what I want to know. The next, the next part of the agenda item is about the information the mayor put on our email about the council, uh, being arrested if you talk over four minutes, and the form that he proposed, which is illegal, which is illegal. We stated that at the work session, I mean, at the retreat, that that item pertaining to employees having to sign something saying they, they would be perjured if, if it's not founded to be true. And we have not discussed that. So he cannot take and remove both of those items, I don't care if they did agree. I had it on the agenda and he's in violation of allowing the items to go forward. But we will discuss it at the regular meeting. So they can walk out all they want, because they don't wanna hear the truth, and they know that they are wrong. They are wrong. He didn't even know what I wanted to discuss about Mr. Allen. Now, we've heard enough about Mr. Allen. What have you heard? You haven't heard what I wanted to know, was the totality of minutes that Mr. Allen has came before the council? And how many times has he been interrupted by the mayor to not allow him to finish speaking what he had to say? Ms. Boulder, I need you to write down what I'm saying, please, ma'am. I need this to be recorded, what I'm requesting. Oh, Johnny's not, doesn't record the work session.
But he's adjourned.
It's audio recorded now.
It's audio recorded now, that's all I need to know.
Oh, there you go.
And we can't get a motion in here. He told the commissioners, this is illegal to ask for a polling of votes inside of a work session. He just keeps violating the law, and it's just sad how certain commissioners sit and allow him to do so. Commissioner Durham, since you're still here, any comments from you, because I'd like to hear them.
I just wanted to give an understanding of the strategic thing that he sent the email on, since I wasn't in the retreat, but we couldn't have no, no dialogue, but I don't see, you know, why he sat there and didn't wanna discuss it, because it did bring no wrong to me.
Thank you.
But I mean, they gonna do what they wanna do. It always does.
And I've never had it on the agenda to discuss Mr. Allen's issues. But I wanted to know the timeframe that he's came forward, because he feels that he was cut off before his time was allotted. We're, this is, we're not living in a.
Is this still? Is this still? Yeah, yeah, I'm just gonna do it.
Oh, okay. Oh, this is forming, now I need to get the hand me on. The regional commissioner said some grant forms today, one of the civil rights. I know, right? And Target told me to get the two.
Now, you can't work, you can't work together like this.
Mm-hmm.
You can't work together like this, this, this is dictatorship, you can't do that.
I'm telling you.
Can't come together like that.
Um, yes, Mr..
Gotta respect everybody, honor everybody.
What, what, what do you think needs to be done as far as, uh, clarification, if there's any law being violated? What do you think needs to be done? You think GMA, or do you think that?
Yeah, but then when you call on GMA, they tell you to refer to your attorney. So I mean, when you refer to your attorney, it's not as if, you know, really no help, but, you know, it's just, it's sad.
Yeah, the one right for that.
So, so your hands are tied?
Oh, they bear tied, when it's majority, same time, came to me, so that's it.
Mm-hmm.
Go me too.
Thank you.
Go me too, they gonna do what they wanna do.
Thank you.
I don't set up the agenda.
What about work session items for discussion, since it was a work item?
Mm-hmm. Bring, bring, bring it forward then.
They all gonna get up and walk away and everything will come off.
But it's showing how, it's showing how petty and, and inexperienced they are.
I know, I just wanted to say because he recorded, he gonna share it off, so if you're doing it in the middle, by the seven o'clock. Because at the end, he gonna cut off.
Yeah.
So for the people to see.
Okay, so I can request that the work session item of that.
Cause it is a work session.
It is a work session item, mhm, mhm.
Commissioner Olivia?
I'll make the request.
Commissioner Olivia, what do you think will help the city move forward in a positive light? And in accordance with what some people may think is the law? What do you think needs to be done? Do you think GMA, do you think the city attorney? Who, who can resolve this problem?
Um.
Because it can't keep going on, in my opinion.
Well, I, I don't, that'd be a good question to ask the city attorney. I see evidently he got up and went out too, but it was my intention since that meeting we had, that retreat on Saturday, it was my intention to call GMA this morning and make them aware of what happened at that meeting, at the retreat. Because the items that the mayor and council were supposed to discuss at the retreat did not even get discussed because of the fact that the mayor and a couple of other employees jumped in on me and what they think about me. And the city manager should have stopped staff in their tracks, but he allowed them to go on and on. You were there Saturday, you saw, you witnessed what happened.
Was the city manager there?
Yes, the city manager's there.
And he didn't say?
He was standing right by me.
And he didn't say anything?
No, he didn't.
And what about the other news media? I was there, but what about?
The other news media, they were not present, because they probably were privy to some information that it was gonna be targeted to me, at me, because I had some staff to tell me afterwards, they feel that they have gotten and disgusted, the mayor and those other staff, that for, it happened the way it happened. It just, that just didn't happen like that, you know? It seems as though that was plotted and planned. And I believe the motive was to try to get me to get upset, but it didn't work. You know, it, it didn't work. I didn't lose my cool, I stayed calm, and I stayed what I had to stay, as I'm gonna do tonight. But, and, and if you see, on the agenda, he strategically, they strategic, strategic, strategically placed my items at the end, so that if they don't wanna hear it, they can adjourn. I mean, that's just disrespectful. It does not matter that you don't wanna hear it, what matters is that I have a right to say what I wanna say.
What make you think they put it deliberately at the end of the agenda?
So that they can adjourn when they don't wanna hear. Everything else has been covered, so they're just adjourned like they did and walk out.
But can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Why is it that nobody, no elect, no other elected official seem to have the same question that you have concerning?
Well.
The process?
I think, in addition to some of these elected officials not knowing their duties because they're new, they think that they have to go along with whatever the mayor wants. I, I think a lot, a lot of it is just lack of knowledge and that they just wanna go along. That's what I believe. Because ever since he took office, not January of this year, but the previous year, it's been orchestrated manipulation of how the council operates.
You brought it out at the retreat, you asked a question, or something there too, about, uh, getting with other council members outside of meetings and meeting with them. Uh, is that lawful?
It's not lawful to get a quorum on a, item you're gonna vote on in an outside meeting. That is not lawful.
Okay. Well, I was there and I recorded the entire retreat, that was like my first time recording a retreat, I go across the state, and I record retreats, but at that particular retreat, it was amazing to me that the news media that is the news, that is supposed to keep the citizens informed, was not at the meeting.
Right.
Therefore, what took place at that meeting, who will publish size that to the general public? Make it available, so the voters will know what took place?
If you don't do it, it will not get done, Mr. Ryan, because like you said, other news media, the local news media, they were not here. Because that's how they operate. If the mayor informs them that he does not want them there, they're not gonna come. And he wanted that retreat to be an opportunity to come down on me like he did, you witness him calling me dyslexic, uh, and, and so many other things, a lot of lies that he's put out. And that just should not be, uh, allowed, it shouldn't be allowed.
Uh, I, I have another question. Do you, or have you questioned maybe why I was at the meeting, record it all? And yet I haven't posted anything up, have you wondered why I haven't posted?
Uh, yes, I have wondered why you have not posted it, because I really would like for, especially the session concerning the mayor and council, I would really love for that to be published as soon as possible. I really would.
The reason I didn't publish it, I tried to not be biased or one-sided, and I tried to respect the government entity here.
Okay.
And I wanted the people to come to this meeting, independent of the retreat.
I see.
And that's why I didn't publish it, but it will be published probably starting tonight.
Mm-hmm.
It's six hours, it's quite long, a lot of workers involved, but I'm not gonna edit it, I'm gonna write very little across the screen. Because I believe, I served this country for twenty-one years, and I believe that freedom of the press and the public right to know
Right.
is very valuable.
Very.
And nothing should, uh, 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 change that.
Right.
Or, 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 or keep, to keep the people in a state of ignorance.
And I'm, I'm gonna do my part.
When I say freedom of the press, uh, there are people right now in serving in armed forces
Mm-hmm.
with their life on the line, that we have and maintain an open government.
Mm-hmm.
But that's why I have it posted, but, uh, rest assured, tonight I probably will put up a portion of it, probably be in about four, four parts. And then I will put this video for the night meeting up. I know people been asking whether I was gonna put it up, but I did it like that for a reason. I, I wanted, I wanted people to do what they was gonna do, since nobody was there to record it, I didn't see no TV stations
Mm-hmm.
and no newspaper reported, I didn't see them, but I'm sure they got a tape, because somebody probably recorded and took it back to them.
I don't.
But I did.
They wasn't there.
I was there, because I have a right to be there on the Georgia law.
Right, that's exactly right, and I appreciate you being there, because as I told an attorney today, I'm to the point now that I. Because as I told an attorney today, I'm to the point now that I really fear for my safety with how they have been plotting and scheming. I, I'm concerned about my well-being. I really am. Because it's like they are to the point that they dislike what I bring up so much. So I don't know what they might try next. Cause I was literally attacked at that retreat. I, I really was. That's how I feel. I was harassed, I was belittled, I was disrespected. You, out of my twenty-one years of servant on, on the council, I've never witnessed, never witnessed in a, a city official being treated the way that I have been treated. I, I've, I've never witnessed it.
And that also includes your alleged voter fraud.
Right.
Uh, charges that was, uh, it, it went through two trials, a mistrial, and eventually you was exonerated.
Right.
On all charges.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so you have been through the mail.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And it also includes, uh, treatment by certain staff, like I told the attorney today. Uh, there were times when I was driving down the road and officers, a couple of officers would just come and rev their car very fast behind me, making me think that they were gonna run into my car. You know, I addressed it with the city manager, Mr. Jacobs, who was then city manager. And I think he addressed it because it stopped. But then more recently than that, when my nephew was involved in a situation, the Douglas Now News, uh, got hold to it from the police department so quickly, put it all out there that I, I, that I caused the, the speed, high-speed chase. And then at the end of the tape, you can hear the officer saying, Commissioner Olivia Pearson, just stupid. Oh, you, you know, who does that against a commissioner? What employee is allowed to ridicule an, uh, uh, an elected official in such manner? None of these things have gone address. None of them.
Oh.
And I'm just, I'm just really tired. I'm tired.
Okay. Uh, Olivia, uh, I say this because, as I said, we have freedoms in this country.
Mm-hmm.
But have you checked the record with, uh, say the Florida, uh, Matters of Florida nine? Equipment ten plus two?
Equipment ten, yes.
Uh, Mayor Linda Harris?
Mm-hmm.
And see what the police did in Gordon, Georgia with Mayor Rand Whippleau?
Mm-hmm.
See what happened with Mayor, um, um, George Ivy?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, and Spada, Georgia. You can Google all this and see what they had to go through.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and, and of course, the, the mayor of, uh, of, uh, Douglas was shot six times.
Of, um?
Christopher Wright.
Yeah, he was over in, uh, not Douglas.
Dawson, Dawson, Georgia.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and so it is now to the point wherein, uh, Stasa Abrams will, it will be in Brooks County on the twenty-seventh at the Freedom Fund banquet.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I won't call their names.
Mm-hmm.
But as you said about your safety.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we had, and I covered this just like I'm covering this. I covered that story just like I'm covering you all here. Uh, Latasha Head, she was a lupus patient.
Mm-hmm.
And the stress took her under according to her father.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr. Lewin Gordon died from the stress they put upon his wife along the same lines that I see here in Douglas.
Yes.
Uh, another lady in equipment, uh, contemplated suicide.
Mm-hmm.
And all of this was addressed, I was in Macon with then Secretary of State Brian P. Kemp.
Mm-hmm.
And all these other places that I haven't even mentioned. Uh, this is a big pattern and practice.
Mm-hmm.
That has been overly documented. But the real news media, your mainstream news.
Mm-hmm.
Will not connect the dots like I have done. And I intend to continue doing.
Yes, sir.
Because if we pledge allegiance to the flag, it should be to everybody.
Right.
And not just for a select few.
Right.
And I know I'm the media, but I also have an opinion, which I try to stay away from.
Yes, sir.
But I do believe that if I've covered all these cities, I've talked to CNN. Rachel, Rachel Maddow picked up on some of my material with equipment ten and she aired it. But all I'm saying is that I commend you, uh, whatever you do, just abide by the law.
Right.
Because, um, I, 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 I never thought I would see Douglas like this. You know, when I first came here, I complimented Douglas.
I know, I know you did. You did.
But now I see something else.
Yes, sir.
So we'll be able to do what I feel like I need to do as a member of the press.
And I want to appreciate you for, for taking out of your time to come and cover this. Because it needs to be covered. The world needs to know. Because we are operating under a dictatorship. That's what's really happening here. If certain people don't want it on the agenda, they're doing whatever they can to keep it off the agenda to, to ostracize other people, uh, from the council. I mean, it's just ridiculous.
I, I wanna ask you another part.
And, and, and let me just say this part too before you ask me the question. You know, I feel like I'm being harassed. I really do. This is a hostile work environment for me. I had to recently have stents put in my heart. And, uh, after this council got elected, the first meeting, I stated, I got up to the podium and I stated, let us be hitters and not haters. And by hitters, I meant that we will operate with honesty, integrity, truth. You know? Honor, respect. For haters, y- you got hate. You're not working together. And, and, uh, from that day to this day, none of the commission have said that they want to operate like that. And, 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 and we're just sending a, a bad example, a poor example to our future leaders for them to think that corruption in government is okay. Cause that's what this boils down to, corruption in government. Your question?
I, I, I commend the city of Douglas for recording their meetings on DVD.
Mm-hmm.
And my question to you is, have you ever, because you got GMA and they're supposed to be powerful. They're supposed to know the law. Have you ever sent Mr. Larry Hanson, I think he was from Dallas?
Dallas.
Have you ever sent him a copy or clips of what you believe to be in violation? Or, or, or causing stress to you and maybe others? Have you ever addressed that to him?
I have not.
Or any other top official?
I have not addressed it with Larry Hanson because he recently became the new, uh, director CEO for GMA. So no, I have not had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Hanson about it. I have spoken with one of the attorneys with GMA before, but that's, that's what I need. I need some of these clips from where you have come and videoed this stuff. And I will get it mailed to Mr. Larry Hanson and their legal team. I will do that. And, and, and also I will get it to some other attorneys. Because this has to stop.
Okay, but as a commissioner, don't you have a right to have that done by and from the city? A video that they have? They should be able to, uh, clip whatever you want or the, uh, the council want.
Mm-hmm.
And that, uh, maybe the Attorney General's, uh, should be able to look into the situation.
Also.
Not even getting all mad, just make sure you follow the law, whatever it is, anybody.
No, I'm not mad.
And follow the charter, follow the charter.
Mm-hmm.
Because they, I'm retired military and we went by the law.
Mm-hmm.
And when you don't go by the law, or if you don't go by the laws in place, then you don't have a one thing and that's chaos.
Right. Right.
Thank you very much.
You're right. Thank you, sir.
All right, here we go. Uh, it is seven o'clock at nineteen hundred hours. If you would, let's take a second to clean up. Uh, we'll clean up the house a little bit and we'll get started. Mr. Davis, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wannelli, you ready?
Everybody's ready.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Everybody's up there ready?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Black Commission. This will serve as our regular meeting for February the tenth, twenty twenty. And we will have our invocation and the mayor pro temp, Ms. McNeil, will do the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. We are delighted tonight to have with us Mr. Jerome Burket. Mr. Jerome, if you'll take a stand for your partner, make your way to the podium. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jerome Burket. He has, um, he's a pastor of Narrow Gate Church, Sharon Douglas. And Brother Jerome also has several outreach efforts in our community that help with drug addiction and the homeless, um, efforts. So, um, the names of those ministries are the Refuge House and the Freedom House. Tonight, he has his biggest cheerleader with him, his wife Denise Arnett. Uh, Denise Arnett are getting the say, and, and, but we welcome you. Thank you for praying this tonight. Thank you.
And what, what a responsibility. And, um, I'm so thankful to live in a city where we do uphold the Bible and Jesus Christ is our Lord. And, um, I'm just thankful that I, I know that God has a major purpose on our land. And I believe that this is a place for revival. And I believe this place is a place that God could call a city of refuge. And I want to declare that of us right now, that Douglas, Georgia is a city of refuge. In Jesus' name. So let's go to the Father in prayer. Lord Jesus Christ, we ask you for wisdom and knowledge. We come boldly to your throne of grace and ask you for grace, here to do your will. As ministers, both civil and church, represented right here, right now, Father, we know you have an original intent and we need to line up with your original intent for this land. So we ask you, Lord, for your wisdom, your revelation, in order to make decisions here today and in the future, to line up with your will for the destiny of Douglas and Coffee County. We just thank you so much, Father, for your will, for your words, for your word in, in this book right here, the Bible. We just thank you so much for it, Lord Jesus. And we just ask you right now to be with us, help us minister one to another in your spirit, by your wisdom. We thank you for every single bit of it. We take authority that's in your name. We bind lives, we bind, uh, bitterness, we bind division. Right now, we pray for people to be able to come into the unity and know what is a God, uh, agenda. Not a racial agenda, a God agenda, where we can all work together as one to do your will here today and forevermore in Douglas, Georgia. We thank you so much and we just, we just pray all this in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Next on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Uh, did see our ROTC out there, so if you please stand in face of crying, if you say you pledge your allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited to your own.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the order of the.
So moved.
Second. Spin motion and second, any further discussion? All in face.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have a second reading slash public hearing of a rezoning of property at three zero two West Green Highway. And as always, our city attorney, Mr. Jerome Adams, will lead us through this process. How you doing, Steve?
I'm good, Mayor. How are you all?
Oh, what?
All right, this will be the second reading. In connection with the second reading, when I conclude the second reading, we must have a public hearing for anybody who wishes to comment on this proposal, he's on. Do you know anybody in the board commission to see if Douglas, Georgia is involved? I'm sorry, same time, that's passionate, so let's put the U five, the land, the government, to see if Douglas, not five, maybe board commission, see if Douglas, Georgia is on February twenty eighth, eleven. As men, complete plans, see if Douglas, Georgia, not five, maybe board commission, see if Douglas, Georgia is on October eighth, two thousand seven, as men, said, new as all. Five, five, tap, ranch, he has to be zoned, R, M residential mixed, all that, piece of park, ram, nine, six, B. Douglas County, Jordan, being part of the, a lot of ram, on the two twenty-three, the six, nine, this is there, being all locked, one and block, B, West Highway, subject being, of course, the fact, said by Ruth C. Johnson, surveyor, and recorded in the black book, four, page one twelve, the Coffee County records, said lock front, a distance one hundred fifty feet, a leave family line of the right of way of State Highway one thirty-five, running a distance one hundred fifty feet, said land had it located there on seven, moon, dwelling, house of Masonite construction, subject that right of way deed from Georgia Department of Transportation. Recorded D book four, six, eight, page one seventeen, Coffee County, Georgia records, offer made the first time to regular meeting, mayor board commission. But see if Douglas, Georgia on June, uh, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty, the river's seven times, past four, Vane, a regular meeting of mayor board commission, that promptly advertised, captured, acquired on the charter, see if Douglas, Georgia on February tenth, twenty twenty. Now that is the second reading. And before you take action on this, I will open the public hearing on this proposed rezoning located three zero two West Green Highway from R fifteen residential to R M residential mix. If anyone has a comment that they'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and whatever comment you may have. And apparently no one has, Mr. Redd for actions.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Yes.
Spin motion and second, any further discussion? All in face.
Aye.
All goes. Motion carries. Next, uh, the items that were placed on the consent agenda. As always, we will have, excuse me, city manager to, uh, read off those items and then we will go from there. Thank you, the city manager.
Mayor, Commissioner, we have eight items coming over on the consent agenda. Uh, I'll read off the items. Item one, approval of the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty minutes. Uh, item two, approval of the purchase for the FY twenty annual baseball, softball, and swing equipment bid. Item three, approval of the FY twenty sale of the two thousand five Spartan Crimson Gladiator Quint fire truck. Uh, item five, approval of the Thun Thai Incorporated Alcoholic Beverage License. Item six, uh, approval of three one seven alcoholic beverage license application. Uh, item eight, approval of W and A Engineering for Architectural Services for the downtown pump cart. Uh, item nine, approval of the updated language access plan. And item ten, approval of the Dell Brinkway to EDH, um, appointment for a four-year term. Those are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. At this time, I can entertain a motion.
So moved.
Spin motion and second, any further discussion? All in face. All right. Next item on the agenda is work session items for all forward for discussion.
We have two items coming over, uh, on the, um, from the work session. The first one will be, uh, item, uh, four, a special recognition and I, and that'll be Stevie Young bringing that, um, to the council.
Honored, honored. You say there are two items from the work session? No, sir. We have the items number nine and number ten that should have came over from the work session.
Mr. Davis?
I mean, from the work session, we have two items coming over on the.
No, sir. No, sir. I'm, I am requesting that items nine and ten be included up under the work session item because that was on the work session agenda.
And then the mayor and council then bring it forward, ma'am.
Uh, they do not have a vote in the work session, sir, to bring it forward. So it is to be added. We do not vote in work session. They were totally out of order. Go ahead, Mr. Stevie.
Well, I would like to say good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
This is Regina Field, would you please come up? Spirit, this is recognized, this is really a unique and outstanding individual.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Um, I want to present to you a very inspirational person in our community. If Richard McElroy would please stand. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Richard McElroy was born April twenty-third, nineteen twenty-three in Manchester, Georgia, and grew up in, uh, Wearsfeld, Georgia. In nineteen forty-two, he enlisted in the Navy and was stationed in London during, during World War Two and was at Normandy. Can I have an applause for that? After the war, he went back home and worked. Then in nineteen forty-seven, he went into the Navy and was in the Korean War. Can I have an applause for that? He left the Navy in nineteen fifty-seven and went to the seminary as he was a minister and until he retired in nineteen eighty-three. He has been a pastor in several local churches, Carter Baptist Church, Brockston First Baptist, Central Baptist. After he retired, he made his home in Douglas and started with an exercise class with Douglas and Coffee County Park and Recreation. And has been in the exercise. Coffee County Park and Recreation and has been in the exercise program over thirty years. And he still comes to the exercise. Ladies and gentlemen, this man came in my office, and Mayor Commission, I gave you the card. And people asking, what is his inspiration? He can do military-style push-ups. This is what the man said, and if you'll notice, Richard, turn around. No, wrong, yeah, it's on the back of his shirt. When he turned ninety, we had these put on our shirts. It says, "Make up your mind. You're not gonna quit. Make up your mind. You're not gonna sit. Get, make up your mind and get up and get moving." Can I have a real pause for that? Would the city want to present you with something? Also, if my credibles, if you would stand, ladies and gentlemen, these people, some of these people have been in the program over twenty years. So can, they also have a applause.
He has requested that the group come up and get into group photo.
Oh, and he needs an Academy Award. He needs an Academy Award. But y'all, he gives God all the glory for all of his inspiration and what he's done. Come on, incredibles, come on.
Y'all come on in here. I'm serious.
All right, y'all just look, we're gonna get several snaps.
Richard, look that way. Don't tell him to do military-style push-ups. He'll do it. Don't do it.
You wanna demonstrate.
Don't push him. He'll do it.
Good deal. Thank you.
And the mayor's got your blanket. This is for the city of Douglas.
Good deal. One more time. Are there any staff comments?
Point of order.
She does not recognize...
You have ignored my point of order. You are out of order. You have ignored my point of order.
I'm not gonna try to sit here and hold on.
You have ignored my point of order. I have two items. You are to at least bring it to a vote. Bring it to a vote. Bring it to a vote.
Taken care of.
Bring it to a vote in this session. Bring it to a vote.
What?
Bring it to a vote to hear.
Got a problem. Item number nine, does anyone want to hear this discussion about Mr. Allen?
There has to be a motion. I offered a motion that we hear the issues concerning Mr. Allen.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Discussion?
It doesn't, it doesn't care.
Discussion?
Doesn't care.
Discussion. I have requested to hear how many times Mr. Allen has appeared and how many minutes he has been... Okay, next item. Go ahead.
Is those emails about, that I sent for the retreat, but we were unable to talk about those items on the email. First of all, it was the wrong email. The second thing is because of the length of the retreat. So at this time, I entertain a motion to discuss that.
So moved.
Second.
Spin motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion doesn't care.
Call for discussion.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Call for discussion.
We have the first reading. She got one item from work session.
Call for a discussion. Call for a discussion. You sent out an email where individuals, employees would have to sign a perjury statement.
First reading of the...
You sent that out?
Okay.
And also, you sent out, you sent out an email, you sent out an email saying that we would be arrested... That we would be arrested.
Is that pressed for time?
If we did not get, if we did not speak... If we did not speak under four minutes. That's what that email said. And I want the citizens to know that you had no right to send out a mo... Of email. You had no right to send out an email about arresting elected officials for speaking.
Okay.
That's what we are elected for.
At this time, I make a motion to adjourn.
And I wanted it to come before the citizens.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries. You stand and adjourn.
Every one of them gonna be like this. I can tell you that, buddy. You're not gonna strip me of my rights as an elected official.
Anytime you want to sit down and have a conversation.
You're not gonna strip me of my rights. I don't have to have a conversation with you. I don't have to have a conversation with you. I have rights as an elected official to get on their agenda and to discuss issues. You want to have a dictatorship, like Saturday was, where you personally attacked me and you had staff to attack me. And I'm sick and tired of it. I'm sick and tired of it. Sick and tired of it. Cause he got his little henchman to go along with him. He called me out my name at the retreat Saturday. The city manager sat there and said nothing. Staff disrespected me and the city manager said nothing and I am sick of it. I've had enough. I've had policemen to harass me. I've had Robert Preston to slander my name. I am sick and tired of it. And I'm seeking whatever recourse I can get because it's uncalled for. Because I have a right to speak out against whatever I feel needs to be spoke upon. But he wants to control what is said and it's not right. So citizens of Douglas, this is Black History Month. You have a black mayor, majority of black administration, and this is the kind of treatment that citizens receive here, especially if you're black. Especially if you are black. And I've had enough. It's time for him to stop. I have a right to speak and he's been doing that for the longest, adjourned the meeting to keep me from speaking. Just address the issues. Address the issues and it'll work out. But he don't wanna address issues. Cause evidently, like, he called me out my name Saturday saying, "I'm dyslexic." I guess he's bought. We've come too far to have an Uncle Tom in a seat to not do what's right. And I'm not talking about just by me. There's been some white people mistreated too. If you're not on the certain agenda with the certain folk. And it's wrong. And these certain commissioners sit up here and go along with it. It's just not right. It's just not right. Then they wanna adjourn a meeting when they don't wanna hear what you got to say. Where's democracy in that? Where's democracy? Citizens of Douglas, this is what you're dealing with. I'm done. Mr. Rice, you got a question for me?
Yeah. I've been to many cities and counties. But how can the state of Georgia allow this much confusion to go on and nobody address it? I'm not saying who's right. I'm not saying who's wrong. What I'm saying is how can GMA, whoever in the state of Georgia is over GMA, how can they allow this to go on as I've seen here for a few meetings I've been here?
Yes, sir.
My, how can that go on? Have the commissioners call for, have anybody went to the police and asked to file if, if, if the law is being violated? And if you don't have a newspaper, if you don't have a TV station to go to the retreat, to get information, to bring it back to the public, how will the people in Douglas and Coffee County and the state of Georgia ever know what's going on? How will they know?
They won't.
How will they know who to vote for?
They won't. Cause you got his family, who has been involved in crookedness with voting for years here in Douglas, Georgia, and his mother was fine. Well, that's the pattern.
I can't...
They get out and they do stuff that's illegal and they get by with it. I'm just telling the truth. I'm speaking on what I know. I'm not speaking on what I heard. I'm speaking on what I know. She was told to stay from over here when it concerns an election, but she's still, every time there's an election, she's over here campaigning.
Is that against the law? Is she violating any law?
If she was told to stay from over here.
My question, was she violating the law?
Yes.
Well, where is law enforcement to enforce the law?
When you're in cahoots, you're not gonna enforce it, Mr. Rice. You know how the good old boy system works. She stated to me about the people that, uh, judges that's in her corner. Come on now.
In Coffee County?
Yes, sir.
Judges?
Judges. Because the first time this mayor won, nobody got out there and worked harder for him than me. Didn't ask for a dime, didn't want a dime. I thought I was doing the right thing to try to help a black person get in because I knew what I had been subjected to under some others. I thought it would be different, but it has been worse. Worse than I've ever seen it. Worse than I've ever seen it. And there are employees that you could interview who can corroborate and let you know the truth of what's been going on under this administration.
Well...
I'm not just talking.
Well, you are talking and I think I'm on the news media here. And I just want the truth to get out because I think that...
It needs to.
This is what CNN, this is what any news reporter would do. This is what any journalist would do. They would stay here. They wouldn't walk out when somebody had something to say. In fact, will you pass this on to your fellow commissioners, that if any of them like to get in for an interview, I will come here again and I will sit down and interview anybody, including the mayor, the chief of police, the sheriff, the judge, anybody, including Larry Hanson for GMA. In fact, I wanna, I may go up there anyway.
Yes, sir.
Any interview. I think I'm gonna do that.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna take a trip. I wanna go. I know him well.
Right.
I wanna know what he's doing to stop this.
To stop this kind of stuff.
And it's not only here. It's in other cities too, cause I got it on record and I've done the recording and nobody wanna address it.
Yes, sir. You're right. But like I said, I've had enough. I didn't stand tonight for the pledge and I won't be standing anymore because if people can't be allowed to be treated the way I was treated at that retreat Saturday, when the mayor and staff personally attacked me, not physically, but they attacked me. That's why we didn't get a chance to talk about the agenda items because they made the whole session on the mayor and the council about me personally, about why I invited the media, about I was called again a liar, like I was called in this, in this chambers. I was called that again Saturday.
Excuse me, you called the media? Somebody say, "You called the media?"
Well, I made it known to, to you that we were having a retreat.
So you called the media?
No. Yes, your se... your, your session, I made you aware that we was having our retreat.
So you notified me?
I notified you on the retreat. Yes, sir.
But why should the media have to be notified? Other than, other than, other than...
Well, they're supposed to be notified by the city manager.
And they're supposed to show up, right?
Yes, sir.
So you didn't, you, you, so you invited the media, but somebody should have already invited the media. They just didn't show up.
Right.
Why didn't they show up, you think?
Because they were asked not to show up so that I could be attacked like I was and it not be, and it not be recorded. But glory to God that you was there because I don't even trust, I'm gonna say this and I'll be done. I don't trust being in any settings with these people anymore. After Saturday, I, I don't trust it and I fear for my safety. I really do. Thank you.
You're welcome. This is to get to three prayers. I'm George, watching the rhymes as I've gone to thirty or forty cities. When I first came to Douglas, I complimented this city. But now, from what I see, it's just like Gordon, Georgia with Mayran Whippleloo. It's just like Dawson, Georgia with Christopher Wright. It's just like Homer Veil. It's just like Lumpkin, Georgia with former Gifford. Just like Camilla with Rufus Davis. Just like the late Linda Harris in Megs, Georgia. Stacey Abrams, you are talking about the right to vote, voter suppression, voter intimidation. But Stacey Abrams, the Democratic Party and the Republican Parties, you are not addressing black elected officials after they are elected and how they are attacked. Now, I'm not making this up. CNN, Victor Blackwell, you know me. I'm saying to you, Victor Blackwell, I'm saying to Rachel Maddow, you got an open invitation to call me and let me give you the historical facts from the Florida nine to the Quipman ten plus two. All the way up and across to Warrenton, Georgia, Spotta, Georgia, Nichols, Georgia. I covered them because I care. If I served this country for twenty-one years and I did, it's because I love the country, fault's in all. I'm not here to criticize, but I am here to give you the truth because Jesus said, "And ye shall know the truth, and that the truth shall set and make you free." I'm not on Olivia's side. I talked to the mayor, uh, uh, Saturday. We talked a long time. It ain't about whose side I'm on, it's who's following the dictates of what is established by the law. Y'all have a nice day. I'm gonna publish every bit of this. I'm not gonna edit it, just like I'm not gonna edit the retreat that I recorded because you, the public, have a right to know. If you can send your sons and your daughters to fight the wars of this nation for this flag that I honorably salute and the Georgia state flag, then I sure as heck can respect the Constitution of the only country that I know and love from my historic foundation. God bless you. Heaven smile upon you. God bless you, heaven smile upon you.
Kind of private conversations between various councils. Uh, this time right now is for kind of bridging gaps between staff and elected. Uh, if there's any topic, either way, from staff to elected or elected to staff, this is just kind of a free for all right here. Any topic goes, uh, anybody wants to bring it up, I don't know if there's anything, obviously throughout the years, you know, there's, uh, there's issues that come up, uh, between the, uh, uh, staff and elected's relationship. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're not so good. Uh, but anyway, so if there's any topic that anybody would like to talk about, I mean, just throw them out and we'll, 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 we'll work through them.
The email that you all sent out about, uh, with all the requests for the retreat, there was a form in there, uh, American Mission Inquiry Form. Did someone explain that process with that and, huh? It came out with, uh?
Uh, basically, uh, that form is something that I created, uh, I think the first time I created was probably three years ago. And this was, uh, we had everybody in office about a year or so. And it seemed like every time we turned around, there was a city employee complaining about something. And, but this is particularly, uh, the police department. And the, uh, my thing was, it, and thi- this is, this is how I feel. If they are, if an employee wants to, uh, have an inquiry taken up by the mayor and council, I'm fine with that. I don't care. You, I'm fine with that. What I'm not fine with, and that's why I created the form, is that if Candace says that Ms. Henderson is doing something and then it gets vetted, it goes through the process, well, maybe Candace was doing it to be vindicated. You know what I mean? She should have received some type of punishment. You know, she had this employee here walking the floor, understanding that she or he may not have a job just because you can complain. Well, now that it's over with, we don't go back to being hunky-dory. You made a false accusation that wasn't founded. You know what I mean? And you should, and you should feel some repercussions up there. Uh, that's what the whole thing was. Uh, and over the last, uh, four or five months, I've had a couple of employees to say that this department head is doing this or this department head is doing that. Okay, fine. Put it on paper under penalty of perjury and we'll shoot it up the flagpole. But you just don't get a blanket statement that this department head did this and when we vetted, there was nothing there and life goes back. Uh, basically, I think you ought to put some skin in there. That's what the reason for was.
So I have a question, I know you asked a question, but, but I got a question about this form because I never saw the form until this email came out. So you're saying you came up with it three years ago?
Yeah, sir.
But you're just sharing it?
Uh, I shared it once before.
Okay.
I, I shared it, uh, we were going to, what's that, the Blueberries? Is that the Blueberries presentation? I shared there too.
Okay.
Uh, the council, the council didn't like it.
Okay, maybe I don't just don't call it.
So my thing was
But I'm, I'm puzzled because no employees come to mayor and council about something that happened in, in their department. That, that's not happening. What happens is there's a grievance procedure that employees file to their immediate supervisor. And I think the policy says if they're, if they're grieving or complaining on that person, then they can go to the next person above that person. But no employees file complaints with mayor and council.
I, I didn't say that. I said that, let, let's take the instance to give a real life scenario.
Okay.
Uh, before, uh, our former fire chief took over.
Okay.
Every two weeks I was, uh, this is going on here in this department, or this is going on in this department. I think that the council ought to do this or the council ought to do that. Well, when one of them was actually vetted by the former, uh, city manager, there was nothing there. There was nothing there. And my, my whole thing is this right here. I, I don't, I don't care if it goes through or not. I'm just saying this right here, I've had sort of an uptick in employees calling me about situations. And as I stress to the employees, I don't get into day-to-day operations. What you need to do is you need to talk to your department head and let's run through this gag, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, but my, my, my thing is this right here. I don't want an employee to say, oh, the mayor and council don't ever listen to us. Uh, or things like that, because that's what I was getting before we had, excuse me, the, uh, former fire chief from that department head. So over the last three or four months, I've had about three employees to ask me something or to, oh, so-and-so is doing this right here, or this department head is letting this person do this, or things like that. And I don't wanna discard it and, and put no value on it. Uh, well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go to my department head, I think they're the problem. You know what I mean? So, but to, to circle back to, I don't think that, that individuals should be able to just make a blanket statement and launch an investigation or inquiry against somebody and it's vetted and there's nothing that was done. Well, you made a false accusation. I think that deserves to be a reprimand. That's just my opinion.
So I, I, I follow you with what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
So how, so would that, would that, if implemented, would that wipe out the grievance procedure?
Well, I think right here, uh,
Or maybe I'm dishonest.
Well, I think there's two or three, two or three pieces to this. One is how do you handle the political side of it when people are going to the council saying things that's not true? That, that's, that's part of that conversation there. Uh, and most of the time, these employees are the ones that the policies are squeezing them to make them, to say things because they're not doing, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And so as the department heads are implementing the rules and policy, they go to squealing. And then most time they run, they run to the elected side of things. And that's, I think that's where he's coming from, from on this. So, but, but the current policy does is if your department head is the problem, or if you feel like the department head is the problem, uh, then there's a process where you go through HR and city manager.
Right.
Uh, but back to your point there, I think probably they need to implement maybe some kind of form where they sign a form that says, if you are filing a false grievance against somebody, you're gonna be held accountable for any lies.
Okay.
So we could probably take, maybe instead of saying, say, "Mayor and Council," we could just have a complaint form. Anybody could have it. And then you just hand that, then they go through HR and we would, we would trigger that process if, you know, if it's about a department head, then obviously it would trigger HR and, and, and the city manager to do whatever, if it's a lower level, then the department head can get involved at the lower level. Uh, but, but, but two things here. And as we know, you know, some employees go to the council because, a- and, you know, some of these employees are the ones that are problems in our ranks. And they go therefore, they, they go to the, to the council members and then they want, you know, throw out false accusations. Um, and, and, you know, at that, there needs to be, there needs to be, employees have to accountable for that. It's clearly, uh, making false accusations about somebody is just wrong. I mean, that's just, you shouldn't do that. And there should be some accountability, uh, 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 like we handled one the other day. And I told person, I said, "Now, if there's false accusations in this, it's gonna come back on you now."
Okay.
And so that person then changed her tune a little bit from getting in a formal situation to, "Let's just have a conversation." Because I told him, I said, "Now, if you make a false allegation on somebody, uh, I mean, if it's wrong." Uh, and so anyway, then, then they just wanna have a conversation with the situation and we'll work through some issues and, 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 you know, it's resolved and we'll, 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 we'll.
So, so, so then maybe there should be steps implemented. But, but being that we're speaking on that form that was submitted by, by the mayor, um, co- cause first of all, let, let's be real. You're not gonna have, I don't think, you're gonna, you're not gonna find very many employees who are going to feel confident enough to file a grievance against somebody who can actually terminate them. That's just not gonna happen very often. You might hear very often, because most people feel that they're complaining against their boss or their supervisor that they are gonna be punished for.
If I'm sexually harassing somebody, they've gotten to be comfortable enough to go to HR and know the thing of have fear of me harassing them because I am sexually harassing them. Or if I did something to make them think I sexually harassed them. I encourage any of my employees, they're being, they're being sexually harassed or harassed, period.
Mm-hmm.
I don't care who they go to.
And, and I agree with you. I would say the same thing if I was a department head, I would encourage them. But being honest, most employees have a fear of complaining against their supervisor or i- i- it doesn't even have to be a supervisor. It could be a fellow worker who they might be, who they might feel is harassing them some kind of way.
That's what department heads have gotta be open enough and honest enough to
To communicate with their employees.
And there are lawful laws of protection.
I, I agree with you. But, but, but sometimes people just, employees do not exercise that right because they feel like they will be retaliated against. But going back to the form that the mayor sent out, I mean, and it, it said that if that person is saying something that's not true, I can have a problem with, uh, an employee. If, if something happened to an employee, by all means, put it in writing and you file it and you get justice done about it. That's how I am. I'm a political science major. Hey, I believe in, if it's not right, you say something about it. Make somebody aware.
Amen.
And, and if you feel that they retaliate against you for you saying something about it, you go to the next level. But a lot of people, especially people who don't have formal education with college status or whatever, they have that fear. Now, I agree, a person should not tell a lie and say somebody done something they ain't done. But, I mean, I think it should be stepped. Because it's just like with the grievance process, it rests with the city manager. The ad hoc committee is a committee that city manager and HR put in place. So people don't have confidence that they can do a grievance and then it go to the ad hoc committee who was appointed by the city manager and the human resources and whomever, and they're gonna get justice. They don't, they don't feel like that's gonna happen. So a lot of times, they don't even bother with filing a grievance. Because, but if it came to the mayor and council like it used to do when I first got elected, that would give people more hope. But sadly, I think if somebody swears out that something happened to them, it needs to be true what they are saying. I don't have a problem with that. But when you feel that you're complaining and it, and it's not gonna go beyond, use the case with what I brought up at this other meeting. You made a decision to, whatever, whatever with the two guys that got fired. They appealed it, if they appealed, I don't know if they did. But I remember it was an ad hoc committee going on, ad hoc committee upheld your decision. Then you got to come and say so again. There, there, there was a sense of justice in that. That's why this mayor and council comes in there to look at everything. Because, let me tell you, when you work with somebody for twenty and thirty years, I'm not saying you and him worked together for twenty and thirty years, but if y'all had, there's gonna be a certain amount of allegiance between the two of y'all when it come down to other people who you have worked with as long. I'm, I'm just keeping it real. I'm keeping it real, go ahead.
I was wondering something, um, I really think the form was something of a, that way to file a gr- if you have a grievance against their condition. I didn't know this, but the employees were vetted.
Right.
I'd never heard of it. And when I saw it, I thought it was gonna be discussed, so before we get out of here, I wanted to ask about it.
But my thing is this right here, uh, because Commissioner Pearson said something about, uh, an allegiance if you've worked with a person for a number of years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I think that's a very true statement. I'm not gonna disagree with that. Uh, I had to contact the department head a couple of months ago because I felt as though that this employee was contacting me too much. You know what I mean? And I didn't want that department head to think that there was some allegiance. So I called the department head and said, "Hey, look, hey, I don't like this at all. Well, I'm thinking there's something wrong with this person always contacting me." The department head said, "I instructed that employee to contact you." Okay. Because I didn't want that department head to think that there was a, a, an established relationship that if this employee got in any trouble, that I was gonna come to that, uh, person's rescue. But I didn't know that the employee was being instructed by the department head. Well, now I don't care. You know what I mean? So my thing is this right here. I don't want the mayor and council to get down in the day-to-day about, uh, uh, operations. If a, if an employee, just like I told the last employee that talked to me about two months ago about something, I say, "Look, put it in writing. You can go online, print out the penalty of perjury, sign it, and then, um, or write your statement and give it to them." I said, "But now I need you to understand. Once this is vetted by the mayor and council, if this is untrue, you go home for two weeks without pay and no appeal rights." Because you called somebody to walk the floor at night about whether or not they were gonna have a job and then you just go back to being hunky-dory. Well, once I told the employee that they had to put some skin in the game, that conversation changed. Because sometimes we can use a process just to be vindictive. Sometimes we can use a process in a mean-spirited way.
Right.
I, I don't wanna do nothing to the chief, you know what I mean? But if the chief puts me on the weekend shift during the summertime when my kid is playing baseball, I might be returning with him. Now all of a sudden, uh, the chief tells me something to do, oh, he's harassing me. He did this and he did that. Uh, Mayor Parker, I think you ought to do something about it. Okay. Write it down, put it under penalty of perjury, and we'll bring it before the council. But now you don't have to worry about that weekend shift for two weeks. If it gets vetted that it wasn't true. Because a person's name and reputation, who, as the leadership of this, uh, community, your reputation means a lot. And when somebody goes out there and tarnishes that reputation, there should be consequences. Nobody wants to be called a liar. Nobody wants to be called, uh, a racist, or nobody wants to be called that they're, they're being unfair. That hurts. I talked to a department head about a situation and you could tell in the department head's voice that that hurt that department head personally that that type of accusation was made. That's not right. You, you just shouldn't be able to make an accusation and somebody suffered the consequences of your actions and there's no consequences for that. And let me say this, this form is, was a conversation piece when we were at the Blueberry. I just had a uptick over the last three or four months of, uh, employees contacting me. Cause, well, we don't have nobody to go to. You come to, you come to the mayor and council, it don't, but you gonna, you gonna put some skin in the game.
And so I'm, I'm seeing where you're going at with that. But, you know, my mind still goes back to the grievance process that, that, that's already a policy that should be implemented at every step. And then if that employee feels like they receive no justice, then do that form to the mayor and council perhaps. But I don't think you can supersede
Then they just go to HR.
Right. With time grievance. Right, right. Supersede the department members, go through that process first and go through the steps. And then it is not resolved, implement that form that you're talking about.
Look, li- li- like I tell all the department heads, just because I say something, I don't need it to be implemented. You know, I'm just a conversation starter. Uh, my thing is Charlie made a suggestion, hey, let's just put it in that process that, hey, if this isn't, uh, if this isn't correct, uh, there's consequences. I'm fine with that. You know what I mean?
And Ms. Pearson, I'll say this too, if, and I don't mean to be controversial, I'm just gonna say. If you think that the department, if we don't have trust in our department heads or in city managers' decisions, then we probably got wrong with department heads and city managers. So it's like this, I'll say this, when it, when it gets to the point, when it goes through the HR, when it gets to me, we have been over backwards as far as we can. Uh, and if that gets to the point where somebody's getting terminated, it's gone to the tenth level or twentieth level. I, I met, like the other day, I met with an employee the other day, Will Park, I met him under the pavilion. And I talked that into, off the record, there's documentation on this. I said, "Son, if this comes up again." I'm getting old enough now, I can, I can call him off, sons and daughters, you know, or, or whatever. But I said, "If this comes up again, you're gone." This, this is a freebie, this, this ain't, this ain't on record. So I know that per- that employee comes back up again. I have been over backwards. I have begged and pleaded with, I had a conversation with a guy the other day, he had a little, uh, weekend activity, he had weekend activities on something and, uh, well, even though it's his personal life, it has brought some shame on the city. Son, if this comes up again, you're gone. So I'm saying, all these off the record, I'm telling you, and I can't tell you prior to Charlie, I can't tell you after Charlie, after Charlie's ten years. Or, or early retirement. Uh, 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 but, but here again, in, 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 in many of these department heads that work on the city, I know Tammy's, we call it Tammy-fied. Uh, Tammy, Tammy Pfizer, okay? Uh, we have been over Uh, we have been over backwards. And, and, and I'm gonna say this, and please don't beat me up, please.
Being open.
Yeah, I said, we, we, in, in the past, when they've gone to the politics, most of the ones that go to the politics are the ones that have been causing the trouble. And I, and I just, and I just, it, it's just, it's just like every time I get a call about sometime, sometime cock start. The videos and audios prove, all, all the way. I mean, it's just, you know, people only run in much of the time. Cause here again, people come to my door all day long.
Right.
And they talk, and, and me, and sometimes they tell me stuff about the department head, and I always tell them, okay, I got it. You need to go back and follow the process. You know, uh, it needs to stay within the department, uh, department head ranks and HR, um, 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 if we're making wrong decisions, we're wrong people. We're the wrong people in the positions.
Okay. Let, let me say this, and I see your hands. Okay. Let me say this. And don't think that I'm saying, okay, y'all are always wrong. That's not what I'm saying. The form came about from the mayor, evidently there was some concern from somewhere about something happening or, or whatever that was not right. Now, none of us are perfect. And we all make mistakes. So, we can all sit and do something that out of our weaker judgment, less judgment, we were incorrect with doing what we done. But when we find that out, we've got to be big enough people and have the integrity to say, okay, I misjudged that. I think I'm looking back on it, I think I should've done this, that, and the other. But I just learned that Patty, I think that's her name, went to the gas department and she resigned.
She went to drive school.
Okay. When we have people who's worked for us, how long she worked?
Twenty years.
And just up and go, there's something, there's something wrong that happened. You know what I'm saying? Most people, they invest that kind of time. They plan on trying to retire or whatever. I don't know why Patty resigned. I, I, I heard she threw the grapevine. Okay. But anyway, my thing is, if I invested twenty years of my time in a company, I, I must wanna be with you. And I wanna make sure as executive official, that each employee is pretty fair and each citizen is pretty fair. Now, I'm gonna tell y'all the truth. Now, I don't know what's the problem, what went on or whatever, but we have some problems. And if we don't want to identify, and I'm not saying y'all going on everything. But when you got some problems, you got to be willing to address them and resolve them. But when that happened with, uh, Brett and that Brandon Luther guy, I got a text on my city cellphone pretending to be Brett, Brett whatever his name is, telling me about I picked him up from the liquor store one day, which is a blatant lie. Something is going on. And I am pouring out my heart because however that happened, it should not have happened. And I didn't respond to it because I knew I had never picked Brett and any other employee up from a liquor store and dropped them off to a school. So, I'm like, this is this. There's a problem somewhere. And I can show you that text. I think it came through a text. I think it was an email one. And I said, I'm gonna save it. And I have saved it to this day. Because I said, I don't know what somebody is trying to do, but I don't appreciate it. I've never picked Brett, Brad, no other city employee up from a liquor store. So, I'm just saying, we got to be real here with what we're doing. Cause I don't believe in playing with folks' lives. I don't believe in that. I really don't. It hurts me in my heart if somebody has been treated wrong. I'm telling you. I don't believe in that. But that was just, I didn't understand the mayor's thing that he said either. So, thank you for asking that, Ms. Pearson.
No, I guess I was, I said she probably, um, I guess addressed it somewhat. But I was gonna say, a lot of times, just like employees feel uncomfortable situation, a lot of times departments are ready to do too. Because they don't think that a lot of times, like I said, you're right. We all, we all learn. We make mistakes and things. But, you know, since I've been, you know, HR director, which has only been last year up to this point, a lot of times it appears that when we do make decisions, you know, they let the officials who are something, it makes it, it make it seem like we're doing everything wrong. And that's not a good feeling for us either. Cause I know, I, you know, I know, and I feel like everybody here wants to do what's right and fair. But sometimes when we make decisions, you know, it's not being treated that way. It's like we doing everything wrong. So, we don't know what to do.
And I understand what you're coming from. I understand. And, and then when you get one side.
Right, exactly.
That makes it even more difficult.
Right.
See, that's why I'm a firm believer of sitting down and talking, which is why I tried to go into executive session several times to get both sides of stuff. Cause you know, I wasn't getting the stuff I got later from Charlie.
Well, a lot of times too, it disappears. And I'm just talking for me, from what I see. And I'm just being honest.
Please be honest.
A lot of times it seems like to me, you only get one side of it. And you run when you don't already crucified us.
Well, what else can I do if I'm asking to go into executive session to get all of the, the whole side?
But even before you go into it, you've already made your opinion that is, that, that's the way it come across.
That was my reason for asking to go in the executive session, to get what the city had to say. Because I knew the cause that I was getting. So, that's why I requested executive session for six months or so. I wanted to be given everything, but I was denied. I was denied getting an executive session. And, and, and that's what I do. I mean, I was an investigator from the state of Georgia, uh, State Border Patrol for nine years. So, I'm inquisitive, just me. And I probably not even worked that job. I'm just an inquisitive person. You know, I, I ask questions, but a lot of people seem like they get offended when me asking questions. And you won't learn or know what's what if you don't ask questions. You know what I'm saying? So, so when I got the call saying this, that, and the other, I was like, well, I wanna go into executive session and I wanna hear what the city is.
But then a lot of times, it's your tone too.
Well, I can't control my tone. So, I've been here twenty, this is my twenty-first year. My tone is my tone. And the people that know me, know me.
Yeah.
Cause I'm understanding what you're talking about your tone. And we had to say, well, certainly, you're right. So, I can relate. If you got a certain way, and I just respect people for who they are. Not saying, oh, I don't like your tone. No, I'm listening to what you's telling me. Oh, man.
But the, the, the thing is, like, when you was talking about going to executive session, that, that, that's a, that's a, that's a majority vote to go in the executive session. The individuals that were on our council had already read this information and knew it was, it was an ongoing investigation. There was no legal reason for us to go into an executive session. And, and that's the thing, uh, Commissioner Pearson, is, it's either your way or the highway. It's not the majority of the council. The, Charlie or nobody can make us go in the executive session. I call for a motion and a vote every time. After we or had read that information, there was no need to go in. But let, let me pivot, uh, to.
That information, let me just talk to you right there. That information came later. I was asking for an executive session before we received any documents.
It was an ongoing investigation too.
That does not matter. That does not matter. That does not matter. That it was ongoing investigation, Mr. Mayor. That don't matter.
So, my thing is this right, it still takes a majority vote.
We already know that. But there was no justified reason to not go into executive session so that, so that we could all have all the information.
All seven of us have the authority to cast our vote. So.
That's not being disputed.
Hold up. What I'm saying. So, when, when I made the motion to go into the executive session and it was denied.
It was denied because you got the others for them to deny.
The, the thing is, and see, that's what I'm saying. And that, that's what the department heads feel. If you've already drawn a conclusion and that's the holy vow. So, what I'm saying is this right, we must always be willing to bet, uh, the process. If the process doesn't go according to Commissioner Pearson's plan, then it becomes a public display. And the department heads get berated. Uh, you know, we, we toss out, uh, personnel issues on social media or on, on television. And that's not good. Uh, uh, we can always sit down and have a conversation about something. We can always do that. It, but if it doesn't go your way, there's a problem. And, and that's what has to really be addressed is that, is that regardless of what is done in the city of Douglas, that four or five or six one vote, that's what stands. That, that, that's what stands. So, but went home and they don't shut up. They don't shut up. If you are on the, on the minority side, then every, the majority of the citizens know and staff know, here it comes. So, just sit back. And the, the, and cause I don't like to use loaded terminology. And I understand you're passionate. I understand you're inquisitive and all this and that. But somewhere, somewhere, we must remember what the junior mayor pro temp just said, respect. If, 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 if Tammy is saying something in a tone that I don't like, hey Tammy, I understand your passion. I understand that. But I'm not gonna allow you to talk to me in that type of manner. You know what I mean? So, when you feel as though that we can have a civilized conversation, I'll be back. But if there's a vote taken in our chamber, oh, you better believe you finna get sandblasted. Especially if you're on the minority.
Okay.
It just didn't go your way.
Okay. So, when has it gone my way? But see, my concern is the fact that, and I heard all of what you just said, okay? It's not about me being passionate. It's not about that. It's about when you, as a mayor, go to another commissioner and ask that commissioner or persuade that commissioner or convince that commissioner to vote a different way, the way you did with the Brandon Paul issue. Commissioner Moore initially voted with myself, Taylor, and Dern. Let me finish. Let me finish.
Correct. Cause I didn't do that.
You, yes, you did, Mr. Mayor. You did that.
Mr. Moore.
Now, he's not gonna admit that. You, so why would you put it back?
I didn't listen to.
You're not letting me.
Go ahead. That's not true.
You brought, you called us that night, or Tay Tay called you, and I was on three. And you finished that, okay, y'all won tonight. Whatever the conversation was about putting on your big boy drawers and all that. I'm like, y'all won tonight. I'm like.
That's not true.
Okay, okay.
Because, because, because you fabricate facts to fit your story.
So, what did you say?
I was, I was standing there, I was standing there, Paul Plaza minding my own business. And then the vote was already taken. Commissioner Taylor came up and said, hey, look, man, I've been thinking about this right here. What do I need to do to change my vote? And about thirty, forty-five minutes later, Mr. Moore called. So, I didn't have nothing to do with it. If I'm in the minority, I'm ready to move on. Cause this broke the same, four votes change anything in the city of Douglas. And I moved on. But now let me say this right. You, you.
That's not what happened. Tammy did not change it.
You can put your facts on anything and I'm fine with that. Because the world that you live in is your world. And, and you, you make up facts to fit the story. Because I'm telling you the truth. I, I just swear it here.
It's definitely a fact.
Right now. Because I didn't make any calls. I didn't make any calls. But, but that, that's you. That's your fact.
So, so all of a sudden.
So, I'ma lie, Jeff, because I didn't make any calls. I've been on the minority of a couple of situations that I didn't like.
But anyway, and we're not gonna keep holding this spell here. Um, all of a sudden, after the meeting that night, when the vote was passed in favor of Brandon Paul with Moore, Taylor, myself, and Dern. And we had a conversation. I don't know if you can recall, but there was a conversation held.
That was after the second vote. That's what I'm saying. Your dyslexia or whatever has kicked in.
Dyslexia is when you read.
No, what I'm saying, something has.
No, sir. If Commissioner Dern was here, he could tell you that that conversation was that night when we had the four votes.
That, that, that's your fault. He gonna agree with you.
Okay. So, you're saying that there your voice saying.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that.
They're not gonna keep arguing going back and forth. Like I said, I recalled that night.
And it's, you recalled incorrectly.
And the next meeting.
You recalled it incorrectly. The conversation that was on three way was after the second vote.
The next meeting.
The second vote.
The next meeting, Mayor. The next meeting, very next meeting, Commissioner Moore voted differently.
You can have your own opinion but not your own facts. And that's, that's what the problem is with our commission. It has to be Commissioner Pearson's facts.
That's not so. Commissioner Pearson.
Yes, it is. Everybody says one plus one equals two. But because you get passionate and wanna sandblast people, you try to intimidate individuals to make it before.
I don't intimidate somebody.
That's just who you are.
No, 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 no. It's like me, however I try to intimidate someone. But you just can't make blanket statements if you don't have something to back it up.
Look at Facebook, how you talk to, uh, any of the department heads, uh, how you talk to other council people. Look at the tape.
Okay. And let me say this, and I'm gonna.
You can have last word.
I'll see you trying, trying again. But political, uh, government, I have, I have never gotten out here out of my twenty-one years and went to other commissioners to get them to rally with me on vote. I've expressed my concerns and my opinions. Now, what you done, like you stated in the email you sent concerning another issue that we had that you had gotten with Taylor, uh, Cindy, and one more person.
I con, when, when I contact the commission, I contact everybody. You are just notorious for not answering your phone. Commissioner Dern does not answer his phone.
You put it in the email that you had got the consensus. That was against the law, Mr. Mayor. You got a consensus outside of a city.
Unfortunately.
Outside, let me finish, cause I'm not. You contacted other commissioners to get a consensus and we were not in a city council meeting. And that is against the law. And in that email, I replied back to you, Mr. Mayor, you have broken the law because you got a forum outside of a city council meeting, which the law prohibits. I said it to you and you did not come in that. But see, that's how you.
Because I don't wanna engage with you. It's useless. It is useless. Just like this, this is what you do. This is what you do in our council meeting. You hijack our meetings. And you just hijack our speech.
What you stated in the email.
That's what you do.
What you stated in the email is indicative of how you do business. You get your four votes to get whatever your agenda is. I don't operate like that. I, I go on the facts and I base it on.
You go on your facts, which are normally incorrect or only partial. And that's what you do. You hijack our meetings.
You keep interrupting me.
Huh? But it's okay that you interrupt me.
I stopped.
Correct. See, rules only apply when it goes to your favor.
It gave you your say. You just don't want to know what you been doing. But like I said, the email shows what you been doing over and over and over again.
Because you don't respond.
Just like, you want to implement commissioners being arrested if they go over four minutes.
I didn't say that.
You want to implement, if you don't, if you don't hear the call back.
Your fact. Your fact.
Okay. Well.
Who, who said that I wanted somebody arrested? Then you go again. You living in your world with your facts.
I guess I didn't read anything about that. I didn't read anything about that. But I did, I, I did agree.
But see, your mind runs so bad and so fast, you just make up stuff.
You wanna take off the authority of a commissioner having an item put on the agenda. Because you wanna dominate, dictate, give and hold. Commissioners, just like department heads and staff, they've always had an opportunity to have an item on the agenda. You wanna be able to take that away from the national officials.
This isn't going anywhere.
I know. Why haven't had a handle?
Only thing I wanted to say, this is taken back to what we were talking about, about employees going, um, to mayor commission. Only thing that I, I, I just wanted to say about that is that as department directors, we've got to put. we've got to push our employees to, to go to the proper channel, which is HR. Every business, every place, they don't have committees, they don't have none of this stuff. HR is the one that deals with this, these situations, behaviors, determinations and all of this. Now, as for myself, I, I go to HR for in and everything, she'll tell you, I stay up in there about an employee or whatever. Because of the fact that she's gonna, I have to trust the title. I don't care what her and I have on a personal level, I, I trust and I respect her title as HR. And so therefore, if she tell me some, she's plenty of times told me I was wrong about some things. I have to respect that. And that's why I'd rather for my employees, and they will, go to HR. Now, I do have issues of employees going above out of protocol. I have issues when a, a employee, my employees go to the city manager and have not went to her. I have issues if my employees go to a commissioner. I do because I think all of us in government have a place. Our place is direct, director is to run this, uh, our departments. His position is to run the day-to-day operations. I look to that the commissioner's position is to, is to do what, to vote for things that is best for our community. Everybody has a place, but if you get out your lane, then this how this starts. This is how this starts. And this is where we should, we should be in here having a, 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 a good conversation. We should be in here trying to mend things that we felt like have been broken. But I'mma be honest, that when we have, if we having Christmas dinner at my house, I don't care about my children inviting other people. But now we having a family dinner, don't go inviting other people that's not family. And I understand that if this is an open meeting, meeting and people can come.
Right.
But out of my time as being director, I look at this time that anything that you and I have had, or you and I or any other, um, directors, that we should be able to talk like adults as family. And not be able to have people to come here that's not family. And it's no disrespect to you, no disrespect to whoever else been in here that's not a director and a commissioner. But I just feel like this was our time. And that, and honestly, they invaded my time because I wanted to be able to mend things back together with you in a private setting. I felt like you all should've had that same opportunity. So, we've got to learn our place and we can't be afraid to, to work in our place. He should, I shouldn't be afraid to fire somebody. Because I'm scared they going to a commission.
Right.
Correct.
I shouldn't be afraid that I'm, that I have, they gonna fill out this form. I don't care about this form. If we do things the way they're supposed to be done and these employees start doing what they're supposed to do, meaning if we're doing something wrong, my expectation is go to the woman that we paying the money to as HR director. Now, if she ain't doing something right, then as mayor commission or city manager who runs the day-to-day operations, then he need to be checking her.
And what if he's not checking her then?
Then you need to check him. Because that's who you have, that's him, that's what he's supposed to be doing. But as if.
But, but that's, that's not the problem, you don't have four votes.
But see, that's what the problem is, we're so busy voting on, on, on stuff, on, uh, uh, employment stuff. To our citizens, that's why our crime rate is up, that's why, uh, there's drugs in the community. Our youth is sitting there saying, y'all fussing about stuff in American mission me, but we can't even get y'all to come here, us talk about stuff in the youth council meeting. They wanna know why they're in our commission, why they here supporting us. But yet, they, I can't even allow them to come to me.
I respond to you, but I need advance notice for when those meetings are.
They're the same time, they're remote commission, and I sent out.
Did you respond back to me and say that?
No, because I sent out emails.
Well, I did it the day before you been in the schedule.
But they're the same time, first, and we announced that.
I have to plug it in, and maybe so, I have to plug it in at the same time.
Well, I make y'all accountable where y'all plug.
Problem now.
But what's your motive behind us doing this?
What's the motive behind doing what?
What's the motive?
Behind having meetings?
Yeah. We never had that, never.
And, and I've never been in an administration where everything I put on the floor is always a problem. I've never had that out of twenty-one years.
Number one, charter should be filed.
Say what?
I said charter should be filed.
What, would pertain to what?
Pertain to, and void ladder and.
Oh, yes, I agree, I said to Georgia when she mentioned that about that form, I was the one saying we gotta agree with procedure.
Right.
The mayor sent out that form, I didn't send it out, he didn't send it out.
It didn't sound like that was what, only thing we were discussing.
Well, that's where it started from, Ms. Henderson mentioned about the form, how it came about and why.
Number one, we got a charter, you know, we should go by it cause American commission approved it.
Right, but the charter is being threatened every day. Because where mayor commission have been able to put agenda items on their agenda, that's being threatened now to be taken away as well as being able for an elected official to speak. And as I've said to this administration several times, it does not matter that I might disagree with what you say, Mayor. You got a right to very say it. Commissioner, uh, y'all and everybody, as elected officials, we were elected by our peers. We got a right to say what it is we wanna say. And when it comes down to that being taken away, a threat to be taken away by our rest powers, we're moving away from, from a democracy with a charter, we're moving to a communist society with a dictatorship.
I think what the department directors are saying, Commissioner, uh, Pearson, is that if there's something on the charter, especially that relates to us, or I don't know even if it's the city manager, it would be good to get, to go to that person. If it's something I do in utilities or customer service, I'd rather for you to say, uh, whenever it might, can y'all sit down and meet with me, I got some questions. Because when we get, uh, in a commission meeting and we have no clue of what's going on, then we're thrown with that.
Give me an example of no clue of what's going on pertaining to which item that has happened like that.
I'm just saying, I'm just throwing something out, I don't know what you have on, on the thing. You have plenty of stuff on there, for instance, the thing with Brett and Greg or whatever.
About them to executive.
I just think that if, if he said, you said, city manager, I need to talk to you about that. And he said, well, right now it's under investigation, we can't discuss that this moment. But Commissioner Pearson, did you get anything that I sent out? You say, no, I didn't get it, okay, well, here is the stuff that I sent out. I just think you all should've had a productive meeting because I will be honest, if I believe in my heart that if, if you, if that would've happened, because there's some, I, I hate to see when you put your neck on the line and saying you fighting for what's right when it, when they're not right, because there are people who do that. For instance, you know, I knew some things, it was after the fact that I had heard that everything was going on, stuff had been going on like that. So I don't, I don't think it's fair for you that you go out and you're, uh, passionate, you're trying to learn and figure out what's going on with different people, or even with him. He could've said, he could've said, well, I can't discuss that with you, or you got with Steve and the city manager. But the only thing I'm saying is that you can, you can, when you get the information, then respect the process.
You are missing the point, Ms. Bowden. I sat there and said, I was requesting to go into executive session before any information was given to us. I said that to the mayor, and I'm saying it again. That's why I was requesting to go into executive session. That's why, Mr. Stevie, you got your hand up, that was your department.
Yeah, I just wanna interject this right here because when, when Ms. Winella said, you know, anyone that said that they heard something after the fact that what was going on that was wrong, as a department head, now I wanna say, I wanna be on this record too. I'm the department head, I didn't know about it, so it's just stuff interjected that was, that was, that people knew what was going on. As the department head, I didn't know.
You didn't.
So I was just gonna make sure that, I, 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 I know you didn't, I'm not saying, because it, it goes over my head when some other people knew what was going on after the fact.
Exactly.
But me, right here with them, I didn't know. So I just wanna make sure I get that, cause, cause the procession will be, well, Dern, how this going on even after the fact? And he don't even know. So that's all I got, I'm not, I'm not going to, even so, I'm just saying, just me as a person, as a man, as, as my department, I, I need to get that out there, as a man, I can't just sit and hold it in like I said, after the fact, some stuff came out that I didn't know going on, that's not even in the department. And I'ma work with them, and I don't know what's going on.
Right.
So that was my whole point, and I took it either side.
And that wasn't found you. It wasn't found you as department head, and also, also, if I'm not mistaken, instead of Mr. Charlie signing the termination papers, if something had been done wrong, you as department head should've been the one to make that decision to either terminate, recommend however you, you thought. Because Charlie was the one to make the decision to, to hear it in the, in the, uh, appeals process. That's double jeopardy. Same person that fire you cannot hear your appeal. That's all I'm saying.
Now, if you and the directors do make a decision to fire someone, look what happens. Look how you publicly raped me over the cold.
Tell me, tell me how, what I done.
Oh, you remember that's a short.
No, 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 I wanna hear from you.
Brandon Paul incident.
Tell me specifically how I raped your wife.
This is the time, all the, all the. I'm just saying, all the false accusations that you made.
Tell me, what did I, what did I falsely say?
Get the paper reading.
No, 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 no. I'm not talking about what, what the paper love is, Georgia. I will, you can tell me what I falsely said.
I'm telling you.
Okay.
In those meetings, I tried to explain to you the true side of your and my conversation.
Mm-hmm.
When I tried, you cut me off, you didn't want me to bring it forward. It was all about Brandon Paul. So when you say that you want to be fair, you want to be respectful to the director, you then come back and tried to have a side-by-conversation with me about it. You brought it out at a public meeting. So you did not at that time request to go in an executive session. The city manager and I advised you not to bring it out publicly, and you did. So when we, we looked at these employees, he was on probation. There were some things that I had already seen that I told you about in a private meeting before you brought it to the public.
Mm-hmm.
You totally ignored that.
So, are you referring to him being in the office, somebody being in his office?
Is that part? No, I never had that conversation with you.
So what part are you referring to? That you, cause I remember him being in.
About the insubordination that I told you about. And I, I expressly told you that from what I see, he was not going to make it pass the probation period. That is when you and Dern brought it to the public. But my whole reason in saying this, cause I really don't care to rehash it all.
Right.
Except for when, when the other directors trying to express to you that when we as directors make these decisions, you don't back us. So then you say, is the city, you, you picking and choosing, it's the city manager, it's the director's decision? And then when you take a vote as a commission to undo a decision of a director, then you are in violation of the charter. Because you all can only fire him. You can't fire any other employees. But you took a vote that night to do it, and then when.
You took a vote?
You're wrong, we took a vote to combine and do it.
To combine them, but still you was out of charter, that wasn't your thought. No, we were not, no, we were not, the city commission had done that before. The city council had done that before, Ms. Henderson.
But I'm giving you an example of, of what we're discussing. And when Ms. Bowden said that when we're caught off guard, I can recall the situation when code enforcement was out. Uh, they went and wrote up the Giffords for having allegations, they went to check on one other property and it turned into another incident when the Giffords had the bibles in the yard.
Right.
I hope you recall this, you may not.
Okay.
I myself even went up to the lobby to try to talk to Ms. Gifford to see what was going on, to try to get her to come back. You were on the phone with her, but she told me it was you on the phone.
I recall that.
And I, and you did not want her to speak to staff, you told her you're not told.
She told me she did not want to speak to you all, and I said, if you don't wanna speak to her, well, why she at city hall? Why was she at city hall?
To get the paperwork to file the grievance, I believe. Okay, but, but then you brought them to the city commission meeting, and again, you trashed the employees. You, you, that's what you did, you trashed our, and you trashed our department because we were doing code enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
So here we are, that's why we say today, if we're expected to do our jobs, you all got to let us do them. We may not always make the best decision that, well, the decision that you want us to make, but based off the circumstances, that's what we're paid to do assess it and make a determination off of the evidence and the, and the, the information that we have.
Right.
Well, no one deserves to be saying they falsified documents, that they make statements in the law, or any of that stuff and in a public meeting, then you attack my personal character.
No, you called me a liar.
You weren't.
No, I was not. But see, you, so if you gonna call me a liar, how is it that I'm not within my right to call you one if I feel like you're lying against me?
Okay, so when it didn't go your way, then you gonna say that I'm inexperienced.
I did, I did make that comment that you were inexperienced, Georgia, that's not true. That's not true.
I have not said you were inexperienced.
Did you not? I did not.
You said that.
I did not.
Okay, play the tape now.
I did not, get, get the tape where I said.
I got it.
Okay, show it to, no, no, you got it, show it to me.
All right, so.
But see, but see, that's a level of disrespect.
No, it's not.
Yes it is, yes it is.
So when we speak up for ourselves, now I'm disrespecting you.
To call me a liar.
You brought my name from now disrespecting you.
To call me a liar? To call me a liar in an open meeting? I think you called me, you, I said it after you said it to me. You had already called me a liar.
No, I had not, Georgia, just over before that call.
No, I had not, that's not true.
Okay.
That's not what you're saying.
Look, look, checks out, checks out, this, this isn't, this isn't really going anywhere, we're just holding up the staff.
With the Giffords, was it about their dogs or their bibles?
And.
Cause they went out several times, was it the dogs or the bibles that you referred to?
Look, we were rehashing stuff and rehashing. I think that, uh, we're not gonna get anywhere, uh, in this. Uh, so, the, uh, Commissioner McNeil is left, Mr. Moore is left, it's just us two here. I think that, uh, it would be wise to find, uh, a time to conclude this retreat.
Mr. Mayor, because I was addressed, I'd like to respond to that.
Say again?
I was addressed several times, I'd like to respond.
Sure.
And it's, it's, it will be brief. I go to certain, over thirty to forty cities, do city council meetings as well as retreats. I know them well. I know where I can go abiding by the Georgia law. And what I do not understand really, and tell you the truth, is that why is not the TV stations, uh, Douglas Now and other news media outlets here today? Because this is a public meeting. I go across the state of Georgia at these type of meetings, budget meetings, and I'm very familiar with this. I be in the courtroom with judges all the way up to the Georgia State of Appeals. And I may, if I may say, I will say this, I may not know y'all's job, but I started charters for the city in addressing and doing what I do. But it's one thing I do know, and judges will tell you that, I know freedom of the press. And I know where I'm supposed to be at public meetings, now that I know. And I will never come to a meeting with, regardless of who asked me to come to a meeting, I will never go to a meeting where I am not authorized by Georgia law. This is an open meeting. I am here not because of Olivia Colley Pearson. I am here just like I was in Ware County last week in the courtroom with Judge Knight. I followed the law to get in the courtroom, it was a kind of a profile case. Your news media was, was not there because they didn't care, in my opinion. Me, I'm here because I do care. And I'm gonna continue to respect freedom of the press if nobody else care. Now, I'm not throwing no curves at nobody, cause I don't operate like that. What I do is abide by the law, and I'm asking you all to bu, to follow your charter. Follow your charter. There are a lot of things that you all say, I know the answer for, I really do. Cause I've seen it in a court of law, working with judge, I mean lawyer attorneys across the state. And I do what I'm doing right now. And it makes me kinda angry, but I'm not angry because I understand. What do you understand, Brother Arms? I understand that a lot of people do things because they don't understand. The book says, and all of you get it, get understanding. And when you know that charter, and if you go to other council meetings, which I do all the time, you are learning a lot. I see a lot of things, but you don't hear me down about one of you all, for the most part. Not even on my YouTube channel, I talk, but I'm not gonna talk about downing nobody. You won't find that in my personality. But what I will do. But what I will do is follow Georgia law. As a retired military person, when I was in the scared police, handling top secret information, it's one thing I learned. You learn the law and stay out of jail.
Who did the charter?
Anybody else have something to report?
On behalf of, of Commissioner Dow and Mayor Protem, she said she had to leave. She just wanted to express to, uh, all the department heads that you guys have been doing a great job. Keep up the good work. She's sorry she couldn't stay.
McNeil, anybody else have something?
I just want to say with that charter, um, regardless of what's been said, you know, we need to follow the protocols or the way we supposed to be. Me as a council, I'm gonna stay in my lane. Now, when it come down to handling the employee chief, employee that he have, I'm gonna let the chief and personnel manager handle that. Only thing that I'm there for, if somebody tell me I'm wrong, is to, whenever y'all bring, whatever y'all bring, and me look at it, and it's as good for the city, then I'm gonna vote for it. But for anything else, you know, Charlie, he's the city manager. He, the wards was in, overstaffing all, they work together. Y'all handle your employee. If any employee come to me, this is what we supposed to do as city council. Any employee, you go through the proper channel. Go to your manager. If your manager can't handle it, go see the city manager. So, please, ma'am, please, ma'am. Please, sir. I know the rest of them are gone, but we as city council, we need to stay, not try to, you know, where take up for an employee and does not go through the proper channel. Uh, uh, and maybe we can get the rest of them here so we can know to do that.
What we need to do as a city council, do what's right.
Do what's right.
Do what's right. Just because, just because. Just because I'm not talking to you. Please stop interrupting me for the bad time. For the bad time. As a council, we need to do what's right. We need to not just go along. We don't need to let somebody come in and put us to vote a certain way. We need to vote our conscience. Because like I said, in that first situation with Brandon Paul, the votes had passed. Four for Brandon to have the duties merged. It was not about his termination, we didn't vote on that. But it was about the combining of duties. And it passed. And then the next meeting, it came back up, and Commissioner Moore's vote was changed. He changed his vote to not allow duties to be merged. We need to do what's right. Treat people like you want to be treated. That's what I've always advocated since I've been at city hall, and that's what I will always advocate. Because each one of us here, sitting here, we want to be treated a certain way. And please excuse my tone for how I'm saying it, but I'm saying what I mean, and I mean what I say. Treat people right. And if you do that, you'll be all right.